I'm waiting till it turns seven. I'll now call this July 7, 2022, meeting of the Oak Ridge Town Council to order. Welcome to everyone here in Town Hall and to anyone listening via our YouTube livestream. We're glad you're here. I'd now like to invite Ms. Patty Dumchowski forward to give the invocation. Please rise.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we ask your blessings on our town council tonight for all the decisions for our wonderful community. We thank the supporting staff here present and those behind the scenes that make our town run so smooth. We also thank all the volunteers that give of their free time to support all of our activities. May we also remember that this week, we celebrated the 246th anniversary of the Declaration of Independence. Bless us, Lord, that we live in a nation that all are created equal, that they are endowed by you, our Creator, with certain inalienable rights, that among them are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. May we always remember, Lord, that you have given us the privilege of living in this beautiful country and never forget the lives of so many that were lost in keeping this nation free. Lord, we ask you to watch over our youth, that they may understand how lucky they are to live in this country. May our educators have the wisdom and courage to teach students our nation's history. May we pray for educators such as Ray Parish, who have made it his lifelong goal to teach students and adults about our amazing legislative documents and how they still remain today. Heavenly Father, I'm humbled in your presence that I am allowed to pray with this community tonight and live in a country that provides the opportunity to my brothers and sisters from all different beliefs. In God's name, amen.
Please join us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Ms. Dumchowski. We'll now move to the next item, approval of our agenda. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries and the agenda is approved. We'll move to the next item, approval of minutes from our June 2022 regular meeting. Council, you've had the chance to review these minutes. What is your pleasure?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the minutes of the June 2, 2022, regular meeting.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries and the minutes are approved. We'll now move to the next item, resolutions, proclamations, and announcements. And I'd like to invite Casey Crossen forward for a very special presentation. And Annette Joyce.
Actually, I'm doing the presentation. She's picking up checks. I'm here on behalf of the Canine Capers Committee. For people who don't know what that is, I hope everybody does know what it is. It's a dog event that we hold every year at Town Hall, and it's, I'm not Town Hall, Town Park. And it's a great event. Dogs are there, people are there, and we have all kinds of contests, and there are vendors and demonstrations. It's just a lot of fun. And we were back this year after two years, so this was our eighth annual event. It was held on April 30. And what we do with the money we raise is give it to the rescue groups that participate in the event. And this year, we had five groups, and we are going to be presenting them tonight with a check for $629.60 each. So with that said, I'm just going to call the folks up. SCPA of the Triad. Now, this is Casey. And I think a couple of people couldn't be here tonight. Red Dog Farm. Okay, good. Some people participating. We have Suzie's Hope. Casey's here just to collect chips. Rough Love. And Rough Love has been with us since the very beginning, too.
Maybe everyone should stand up in front of the dais and we can get a good photo.
And then we have North Star Bloodhounds, who brought along a very special guest. They have also been with us since the beginning.
I like that dog. That's great.
So we thank everybody for coming and for participating.
Annette, you too. Yeah, come up here. Thank you, Annette, and congratulations to everyone who received these awards and everyone who worked on this great event. We'll now move on to the next item, which is a report from the Guilford County Sheriff's Office, and I'll invite Detective Sergeant Seals forward.
Good evening, Council. I appreciate you guys taking the time to listen to us tonight. For the month of June, the Sheriff's Office responded to a total of 192 calls for services within Oak Ridge Town Limits, which resulted in 15 formal case reports. Highlights for the month, and I hate if we sound like everybody's here right here, but big, big heartbreaks. Smashing grounds at our area parks where windows are being broken and purses being stolen, and stolen credit cards have been being used to buy gift cards, stolen checks have been used to be cashed by subjects who were trying to involve in felony gambling activity. For the month, we did not have any in Oak Ridge Town Park. However, in surrounding jurisdictions, we did take a reported Triad park, Cascade Preserve on Hubble Church Road in Stokesville, or in Curtis.
It's Oak Ridge.
We would like to remind our residents to continue just to carry the bear essentials with you when you're visiting our area parks and be vigilant about your surroundings and where you're parking. We are continuing to work these cases. They're very difficult to solve due to lack of surveillance cameras and people being able to continue to mask up when they're going to various stores to use these stolen credit cards, but we're continuing to investigate those as much as possible. We did take one or four of the shoplifting here at the Tractor Supply at Oak Ridge. We do have great photos of the individual and was driving a go-kart and disabled and working hard to get him identified. Animal leave copies of his prime charge was in the lobby and some of the car break-in people. If anyone likes taking those, we will share those. We'd also like to remind everyone that the Sheriff's Office does do vacation checks. July, everybody's going out of town. If you'd like to say something now, please call our office at 336-641-2300. We would more than like, we would be glad to check in with residents before you log out of town. Also like to remind everyone that we are on Nextdoor and Neighbors by Green. We often post the crime reports on there or alerts on there about things happening in specific neighborhoods and across Northwest Guilford County. So please join up on there and keep in track of everything.
Yeah, just want, you mentioned something at Cascade Park, over at Cascade.
Cascade's Preserve is the.
Yeah, I know that. It's in our town. You had mentioned it was in Kernersville. It's actually in Oak Ridge.
Oh, it's in Oak Ridge. I thought, based on our report system, you say it's Kernersville, I guess.
Yeah, well, so it's a portion of our town has the same problem, but just thought I'd mention that.
Was that in the parking lot at the Cascades?
It is. It's a small little parking lot, good little.
Let me ask you.
Thank you.
I actually do have a more serious, would cameras be of any benefit?
Yes, absolutely. Anything that would capture tab numbers especially. We do find a lot of times you do get tab numbers that they own rental vehicles, but gives us a starting point. So if we have a vehicle that we know we're looking for when we're going to Harris Center or Walmart, we're looking at parking on cameras, helps us track the people a little bit better. And I have made several cases that way previously, but cameras are one of our best tools that we can use.
Okay, I appreciate you saying that.
Thank you. George, you might want to lift your microphone up a little because you're not quite hitting it. Item number six, a report from our Oak Ridge Fire Department, and I'll invite firefighter Chris Golds forward. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Council, for having me here this evening for the monthly report for June. It's been a busy month. We've had a total of 51 fire calls and 48 EMS calls, including one as a CPR, which comes out to a total of 99 calls for the month. And as far as the staff training, we have done a total of 417 hours of training.
Fantastic.
And as far as the safety tip, I'd say continue on for July. It's for everybody to stay hydrated the best they can, especially with everybody's spring break and summer break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We'll now move to item number seven, the Town Manager's Report. And I'll open by saying, before I turn it over to Mr. Bruce, since items A through D are all sort of financial housekeeping matters, I'll ask that staff present those all at once, and then I'll invite Council to consider either a single motion addressing all of them or separate motions at your pleasure. Mr. Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. I'm going to ask Town Clerk Sandra Smith to give the report on items A through D.
Thank you, Council. Items A through D are basically kind of housekeeping items and moving money around to various places. The first is for the Core Grant Restricted Fund. We are asking that $20,000 be moved into the restricted fund. This was something that probably should have been done in the previous budget year, which ended June 30, and we just kind of neglected to ask that that be done. The second item is, well, actually, the next two items have to do with the Veterans Honor Green. And the first one kind of catches us up for the quarter. As you know, Council had requested that the money that is raised be matched quarterly, and so then we match it and then move it into the restricted fund. Council last year requested that $34,000 be matched, and so the committee exceeded that amount. So we are now not only doing the amount that was raised this quarter, but also the previous quarters that we were unable to match last year. So the previous total was $95,611.87. The committee raised $4,560, and we would also ask a match of that amount and the amount left over from quarter one, which was, I'm sorry, quarter three in last fiscal year, which was $1,452.87, and an additional $17,660 from quarter four, which all that combined is $23,672.87. Once that is done, that will make the total in the Veterans Memorial, excuse me, Veterans Honor Green Restricted Fund as $123,844.74, which is pretty amazing. And then item D is for the Historic Heritage Grant Fund. As you know, the Historic Preservation Commission oversees grants in the historic district and of other historic properties, and these are small impact grants that hopefully pack a big punch. They are matching grants, and so the person that is awarded the grant has to match up to $2,000, or a lot of times their projects go well over that amount. So this is to match the $900 that was paid, that was budgeted normally, and then the $2,000, which was an emergency grant that would shore up the foundation of the H.C. Gardner House. And so that is a total of $2,900. That amount is coming out of the Veterans, I mean, excuse me, the Historic Heritage Grant Restricted Fund, and that will be moved from there back into the general fund, which is where we pay the grants. But these are all just housekeeping items, and you can approve these individually or separately.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Council, is there a motion on the above matters?
I make a motion that we, I'm going to combine them.
Yeah, just say.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve all of them as recommended, establish a Core Grant Restricted Fund and allocate $20,000 from the general fund, that we move $4,560 to the Veterans Memorial Restricted Fund, and $23,672.87, and also move that to the Veterans Memorial Restricted Fund as a match, and also move $2,900 from the Historic Heritage Grant Restricted Fund to the general fund.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I probably buried in there was that, how much money is left in our matching fund? How much money do we have left to match?
In the.
For this, for this year.
Veterans Honor Green?
Yeah.
Well, this is the first that it has been matched this year, so it's a total of $34,000 that the town is matching, and this is.
Of the $34,000, what's left?
This is $17,660 coming out of that.
All right, so about half's left?
So ask our finance officer.
About half's left, that's fine.
Plus the 50,000.
Plus the 50,000 that we can use.
The 50,000 small town developers.
Yeah, I understand. What's left in the matching? The matching pool is $34,000, and we have about $17,000, $16,000, $400, whatever. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to you, Mr. Bruce. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
We vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. We were doing discussion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries and all four are approved. Thank you. Sorry to get confused there. Now we'll move back to Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. Item E is the consideration of the acceptance of a deed of conservation easement on the Banderas Farms property. Council, we recall that a condition of the town's contribution of $41,250 towards the purchase of the Banderas Farms property was the recordation of a permanent deed of conservation easement, which would replace the temporary one that's been in place since the purchase of the property by the Piedmont Land Conservancy in December of 2020. Under this permanent deed of conservation easement, both PLC and the town will have a permanent monitoring status and the ability to enforce the conservation easement provisions. This will assure that the Banderas Farms property is used in accordance with the town's investment and will remain as an open space preserve with equestrian and hiking trails with limited infrastructure such as parking and restrooms to support those uses. There is a baseline report establishing conditions on the property that's been submitted and under review, and I'll also add that the easement was developed by the Piedmont Land Conservancy in close consultation with our town attorney, Mr. Thomas. The requested action is to approve the permanent deed of conservation easement instrument on the Banderas Farms property as recommended by the town attorney, subject to acceptance by staff of the baseline conditions report.
Thank you. Council, is there a motion on this matter?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the permanent deed of conservation easement instrument on the Banderas Farms properties as recommended by the town attorney and subject, of course, to the acceptance of the staff.
I'll second it.
The motion has been made and seconded. Are there, is there any discussion?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries, and the deed of conservation easement is approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a request to reappoint John Browning and Mike Kimmel to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board.
Thank you. And in accordance with our policy regarding standing boards and committees, and based on a consensus vote of council, consideration of these reappointments has been placed on tonight's agenda. Is there a motion, Council?
I move that we reappoint John Browning and Mike Kimmel to the Parks and Rec Board.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries, and thank you to John Browning and Mike Kimmel. You are approved for another term. We appreciate your ongoing support.
Thank you. Item G is consideration of the approval of unsealing closed session minutes of July 1, 2021 and July 22, 2021.
Thank you. Council, is there a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion. We unseal the closed session minutes of July 1, 2021 and July 22, 2021.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries and the minutes will be unsealed.
Next item, I've asked our town attorney, Mr. Thomas, to provide Council with an update on code enforcement of property located at 8364 and 8346 West Harrell Road.
The update is simply that service is still pending, but it will be over soon because it's now being advertised, publication notice, because that's what we had to resort to. There have been two filings. The first filing, through my own oversight, when the defendant finally came in to accept service after the sheriff failed to serve, it was two days after expiration of the life of that summons, and I had no choice but to advise on dismissing and refiling the same action. So we refiled in May. Once again, the Sheriff's Department failed to serve. The certified mail sat at the post office for three-plus weeks and was not collected, and so we have had to resort to newspaper publication notice. That is now running, and in about two and a half weeks, I'll be able to do my affidavit, well, after I get the affidavit, and that service will finally be perfected. And at that point, actually, 40 days from yesterday will be the deadline for an answer by the defendant, after which, if there's no answer, we will get a court date. Now, there has been communication with this owner. There have been assertions from the owner that he is removing non-conforming material from the site, but it has not come into compliance yet, and until it does, the proceeding will continue. The refiling did not affect the Notice of Civil Penalties, which was begun in September, about 30 days from last September, was it? So it's been running since August, so that's into the 11th month. How much a day was it? 500? 500 a day. And that is unaffected by the refiling because that's a civil administrative penalty that continues, even though, you know, whether we went to court to enforce it or not. And remember about civil penalties. They already get people's attention and get them to do something. Collecting is another matter, and if you do collect a civil penalty, 90% goes to the school board. Our object here is to get enforcement of our zoning, our development ordinance standards first, then recover our costs, then recover civil penalties that are applicable or as may be negotiated after the property is in compliance. That will always be the first goal, and the money is secondary, although our own costs, we always want to get those back. But that's as complete an update as I can think to give right now, Council. I answer any questions if you have any.
I have one question. When you said it goes to the school board, will it go to our local school board or this North Carolina school?
Guilford County schools.
Guilford.
Under the statute for civil penalties, all civil penalties. Uh, under the statute for civil penalties, all civil penalties, 10, you can retain 10% for administrative--
Yep.
--as an administrative overhead figure, and then the rest goes to the school.
But it's important, and we're trying to make it very, very clear, this is not a way for us to generate revenue.
This is not a, these are not revenue, uh, enhancing measures, that's right.
There's no real incentive for us to do this other than to enforce the, the regulation.
But it's a real incentive to the owner, because it is a leaning against their property, and it can result in their loss of their own property, if it's bad enough, and if, if we had to go to that extent, so, um, there are teeth there.
Okay.
It's the purpose, but, uh, people get excited about numbers, and I think the first thing is always that what I said, is to get compliance with the development ordinance.
I think the most difficult thing about cases like this one is how much staff time they take up, because we follow the statutes of what we have to do to inform, and just serving this particular violator has been, has taken an enormous amount of time, and we appreciate your support as our town attorney. But the real cost to the town, uh, simply because we want to uphold our ordinances is, uh, is huge. Is there any further, are there any further questions or discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Uh, we'll then proceed to the next item. Back to you, Mr. Bruce.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, take an opportunity to provide an update to counsel on the Water for Fire Protection Study. Uh, the Wooton Company has completed this study, the final report, it's been distributed to the Water Advisory Committee, uh, and to Town Council. Uh, we have copies available here at Town Hall, and they'll be posted on the website soon. Uh, this report was developed in close consultation with staff, uh, with council members, uh, and with the Oak Ridge Fire Department, as well as the Water Advisory Committee. Uh, the committee has had an opportunity to review the report, and it's had initial discussions, and will have an additional opportunity to discuss the report with our consultants, uh, at the next meeting in July. Uh, we expect recommendations from the committee to come to the council shortly, uh, but today I just wanted to give an op, have an opportunity to, uh, present a high-level overview of the results of the study. Uh, the primary task for our consultant was to explore the feasibility of a water supply system, uh, that could, uh, for firefighting, uh, that could also include the use of, uh, multiple ground-level storage tanks and hydrants at strategic locations around town that would be served by groundwater. Uh, what you see on the screen is a close-up version of a portion of the town in which you can see, um, the, uh, red circles indicating locations where groundwater, uh, storage tanks could be located. Um, and if, Mike, if you could kind of maybe scroll around a little bit, uh, or zoom out, you can actually see, um, a little bit, uh, other locations that were noted, uh, and prioritized by, uh, the fire chief. Um, the study also, um, analyzed the feasibility of the installation of an elevated storage tank at the Oak Ridge Fire Department property, and installation of main lines with hydrants along strategic corridors. That system would likely be served by a surface, uh, water source. The report summarizes the feasibility, as well as cost opinions on these multiple options. Connection to a surface water source would also provide a source for drinking water in the future. Um, I noted that the red circles show, uh, potential locations for, uh, storage tanks. Um, you can also see, um, where the little blue icon of an elevated tank is located, that's at the Fire Department property. And then the dashed lines, red and yellow and green, and this, uh, map is available in detail, uh, in the report, um, are potential water mains that would extend from a connection at the Forsyth County line with Winston-Salem Forsyth Utilities. To provide water at any of the groundwater storage tank locations, uh, would be expected to cost anywhere between $500,000 and $600,000 per location, which would include purchase of a well lot, storage tank, 1,000 gallon per minute pump and pump house, as well as engineering and other associated expenses. Uh, the elevated storage tank at the Fire Department property was priced, uh, for a 250,000 gallon tank, uh, priced at roughly 2.8 million dollars. Uh, that tank was sized and located to provide water not only for fire protection, but also as a potential future potable water system source as well. Uh, the distribution mains extending from the Forsyth County line to the proposed elevated tank, uh, would include the purchase of, or the installation of a booster pump at the connection point, uh, the costs of the, uh, pipes itself, as well as engineering and contingency costs of approximately 5.2 million dollars. Extending water mains along corridors, as shown on the map, uh, could cost up to an additional 10.8 million dollars. Uh, the Water Advisory Committee will be discussing this report further at their July meeting, with recommendations to counsel to follow. And as a reminder, the town has a 1.1 million dollar water appropriation from the state, a request to Guilford County for 2.765 million dollars of ARP funding, and, uh, we are investigating other potential sources, uh, for water funding as well. Uh, there's more to come, uh, after the Water Advisory Committee reviews in more detail, but I'd be happy to answer, and I'm, and Mr. Sullivan, as a representative of the Water Advisory Committee, is available to answer questions as well.
Thank you. Are there questions or comments, counsel?
Yes, uh, okay. So we're looking at, what did you say, 5 million to bring in the water line down 150 to connect to, uh, the storage tank?
That, that's correct. To, to run a line from the Forsyth County line to the Fire Department.
And of course, another, how much on where the green dashed lines are?
Uh, the other lines are, um, listed in priority, 1 through 6, other water mains--
Comes out to a total of--
An additional 10.8 million dollars.
In addition to the 5 million, so a total--
That's correct.
--of 15, okay.
Correct.
Now, if we, let's say we go with these satellite storage tanks, with, now, I know some talk has been that we would generate those, possibly, well, well water. How big exactly are those lots that we would be purchasing?
George, speak into the microphone, you're very hard to hear, even this close.
How, 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 how large would each of those lots be for the satellites?
Large enough for the, uh, 30,000 gallon storage tank. Um, I, I mean, a quarter acre potentially, uh, maybe even less, enough to accommodate a 100-foot radius for the well, storage tank, uh, pump, house, and so forth.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, um, when, if we were to go that route, and I'm saying if, what's the likelihood that we're not going to hit water?
That's anybody's guess, George.
I think you understand where I'm going, because it, we have, how many acres behind us here? 57 acres? And I believe it took four tries before we actually lucked out. So, I mean, there's a possibility that we could buy one of these things without, you know, and, and there'd be no water. So it would have, you know, I'm just saying, the more I look at and read through this study, the more appealing that we're running the line in from Forsyth County, and, you know, would be now, of course, the downside is, we are talking about a heck of a lot of money here. So it would have to be done probably in stages. At least, uh, yeah, that's the way I'm kind of thinking. But, uh, so, anyway, that was my question.
Thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, I, I think there's no question, I've been very enthusiastic about supporting, uh, getting a water system here. My concern is, is that, um-- that if we get the money from alternate sources, that, um, we may rush too quickly to put something in that might get minimal use. And that's my biggest concern with bringing in surface water in such a large endeavor, is that we no longer have the ability to force anyone to take water. So even if we bring it in just for fire protection, uh, we have a system that we have to maintain that may not be getting used very much, okay? Um, you know, so, so I might, I'm just a little concerned that we want to be careful that if the state comes in and gives, is, is saying, hey, here's, here's, here's a bunch of money, that we don't put a system in that we're now burdened with a cost with very, very little benefit. You know, that, that we bring in potable water, but nobody's required to hook up. So I think it's important that if we're gonna, if we do go that route, that we make sure we have a, uh, that we find, that we talk to a lot of the developments and, and see if they're willing to take water, so that we have someplace for it, because otherwise, we have to flush the system every once in a while, even if it's just used for fire protection, we have to make sure it's working, and it's clean, and all that kind of stuff, you know? So I'm just worried that sometimes when a pile of money suddenly appears, everybody says, hey, let's just do it. And I'm just cur, concerned that we make sure that we, um, think through the other side, if we get this big, you know, uh, water tank. Like I said, I'm very enthusiastic for, for municipal water. I, I want it, I think it's important we do it, I think it's important that we provide fire protection and things like that. I just want us to be careful, that we just don't get so excited about what some people would view as free money, and, and, and build a system that doesn't really give us the benefit that we really want. So I just want to make sure that we're, be very cautious about it, that's all.
Thank you. Counsel and Pittman.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Um, when, when I read the report, um, what I got from it is that there are options--
Right.
--for us to put together, uh, basically a package that will, number one, serve our Fire Department--
Exactly.
--for fire protection, and there may be benefits of getting some potable water out of that. Um, I'm not, I'll be honest, I'm not an engineer, I'm, I'm an accountant, and so I look forward to hearing what the Water Committee, their actual recommendation, when they look at all of the options, and, um, after listening with our Fire Department, who's been very active in the discussions, um, hearing what they have to say before I start judging, well, I think this is better than that, or this is more cost-effective than that. Um, so I guess I'm just waiting, uh, it was great anticipation to hear, uh, the final recommendation for my Water Advisory Board.
Well, I guess I may as well give the committee report now.
You might as well, you might as well.
Um, I, all along, and, and, and this last meeting was no exception, we have taken a very strategic approach. This was the committee's first look at the report from, uh, from Wooton. So we will be getting into the nuts and bolts of not only the two basic alternatives that we have, but the various options that are available to us within those two alternatives. Uh, it's always going to be a strategic approach. Um, the, our committee members are incredibly well-qualified, um, we've got engineers on that committee, so I, I'm very confident that whatever we come back with as a recommendation, or a series of recommendations, and I expect that's what it will end up being. Uh, there may be, uh, alternative recommendations that we make that, that counsel would have the opportunity to choose from, uh, but it, it will always be a, a strategic approach in terms of what's the best value for the town, and, and, uh, will serve our long-term interests best. So that's where we're going with this. Okay?
Thank you. Those are good points, and by strategic, I think part of what you're talking about is meeting, um, meeting both the goals of the Fire Department, but meeting the long-term goals of the, the very small water system that we have now, that we will be incrementally expanding over the years, and, uh, we don't want to get ahead of ourselves, that's a good point--
Right.
--that the Mayor Potem has made, but we have, uh, this counsel has to wait and hear the recommendations of the Water Advisory Committee, then come to our own conclusions, and then we have to, uh, do what we can afford, and that's the balance that we always have, is doing what's right for the town within our means. Any further questions or comments?
But I just wanted to say, too, that the Water Committee's doing a, you know, an outstanding job. I, too, am looking forward to seeing what they, they actually come back.
Well, thank you.
Now, you know, I think we all agree that we need a, we need to have a fire suppression system. It's going to help not only, um, you know, for the obvious, but it also will help folks in our town on their homeowner's insurance, if we have a, a fire suppression system. And so I'm, I'm eager to see what comes back, and I think, Spencer, you guys on that committee are doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, George. Um, thank you. Other items, Mr. Bruce?
Well, on, on a related note, I'm happy to report that after, uh, several less than successful attempts to find, uh, an adequate water source at Heritage Farm Park, as Councilman McClellan has alluded to, uh, we finally hit a location with a productive flow, so, um, we're very optimistic now and confident in moving forward. Uh, we're currently working with the Guilford County Environmental Health Department on a permit to conduct a 24-hour drawdown test, uh, to make sure we have a sustainable flow, and that we don't impact neighboring wells. Um, once that permit's in hand and the drawdown's complete, we'll be able to proceed to finalize construction drawings. Um, at that time, we'll be asking counsel to reconsider, uh, financing terms, uh, seeking approval from the local government commission, uh, bidding the project out, selecting the lowest responsible bidder, and so forth. Uh, but it's exciting to report, uh, that, uh, we're making progress, and I hope to continue monthly, uh, reporting on that progress.
Thank you.
And if there are no questions, I, I actually have two additional items of business for, uh, counsel this evening. Um, the first is a request to declare as surplus two park equipment, uh, pieces of park equipment, um, a Gravely, um, 472 Pro-Turn mower, and a Toro Sand Pro 3040. Both have been ordered and will be replaced. Um, this allows us to, uh, to, um, when we make the purchase of the new equipment, trade in the existing equipment, um, and, and also, uh, for one of, for the mower to, uh, seek a highest bidder for purchase of the used equipment.
Thank you. So we need a motion--
Yes.
--to declare these surplus. Uh, counsel, is there a motion?
I think, go ahead.
I move that we, uh, declare the Gravely mower and the Toro groomer as surplus equipment.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and they are surplus. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last item tonight, um, Town Clerk, Ms. Smith, is going to provide an update to counsel and the public on our website upgrades.
Okay, over the last, actually, couple of years probably, we have been working on our website. Uh, this is our current website. We know that it is very old, it's been here at least 10 years, longer than 10 years, because it was here, uh, when I started here. Um, it is not terribly functional, it is not attractive at all. Uh, you know, at the time when we create, it was created, it was kind of the best that could, you know, be done at that time, but websites have come a long way, and so we have been moving things around. I don't know if, how often any of you go to our website, but this is our front page now. We've moved a lot of the things off, we're moving them over under these, uh, navigation bars over on this side, in anticipation for our new site, which the mayor and I have worked on a lot with, um, Gov Office, who is the, um--
Defender.
--company that we work with on our website. Uh, this is going to be our new site. Um, you can see, it looks a lot different, it has, uh, these lovely pictures of Oak Ridge that rotate through there. Um, these items here are called the film strip items, and you can click on these, we try to select items that we felt like people would go to, uh, quite a bit, um, and just make them easy to find, easy to go to. I neglected to say, up here at the top, we have these also navigation bars, and these have a lot of drop-down menus, so hopefully, the way that we have rearranged things, they will be a lot more logical, a lot easier to, to find and locate. Of course, up here, we have a search bar, if you need to go and search for something that you can't, can't find readily. These are called our carousel?
Carousel, that's right.
Okay, this is our, our carousel, um, here. These items also move around, but, um--
They're not rotate, oh, there they go.
There they go. Um, so they will have items under there, and, and-- So they will have items under there, and, and all these things will have links. You can see that one is already a link, but they will have a lot of links where you click on these things if you wanna know what the news is, if you wanna know what the upcoming events are, you know, different things that are going on. And we can change these items as often as we need to. For instance, if we wanna change, this is a photo of canine capers, if we've already had that, and we're getting ready for, uh, the luminary event, uh, around the holidays, we can change it to a photo of that. These items down here are called our box promos. Um, we've also illustrated those with some nice pictures, most of them, you know, actually from Oak Ridge. And you can click on these items as well, and they will take you to a different section that will show you a lot more detail on all these different things. And they are also changeable. So we, from time to time, we will be changing these around. Um, you know, you can see our village core, the municipal water system, uh, this is light up the night for an event, uh, this talks about our strategic plan. And then at the bottom, we have a lovely picture of our Heritage Farm Park with, uh, hay bales over here. And then at the bottom is our contact information. So this will be made live on Monday. If you happen to be on here Monday morning, you are probably gonna see things on our old site totally going haywire. And that is, uh, with a purpose, that they are moving things over to our new site. As I understand it, hopefully, Monday afternoon, we will be able to go to our new site. And so I, you know, encourage all you guys, it, we know there are gonna be bugs, there are gonna be some issues, things perhaps don't transfer over exactly as we anticipate, but we just encourage everybody and you guys out in the audience too, uh, please go on there, look around, uh, and then feel free to tell us. First of all, if something's not working, uh, but then also, what do you think about it? Are there things that we could do better? Um, that kind of thing. So, um, Monday, we're keeping our fingers crossed that everything will move over and it will be fairly, fairly seamless. And it has been a long process. The mayor and I have spent many, many, many hours trying to get this together with our website designer, but she, you know, created the design and mainly we're doing all the legwork, so. And, and trying to think strategically about exactly what do we want on our website? What do we want it to look like? What do we want it to convey? And then also, what information do, do people want that are, they're gonna be looking for? And I know from my own personal experience, nothing annoys me more than to try to go onto a website and not be able to find out pretty quickly what I'm looking for. So we're trying to eliminate that. And mayor, you may have some things to add to that?
No, you've done a great job. We're nervous, but we're excited.
Have you guys really tested it out on tablets and phones?
Yes, it's a tablet-friendly and phone-friendly design.
Okay, good.
Anything else? Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Before we leave the manager's report, and this is just something that occurred to me today, since you did the ADD, ADD thing, do we wanna start thinking about allowing him the option of having, what I guess you call it, the consent, consent agenda, consent degree, or whatever you call it? Where it's just an up-down vote on a list of items? And unless we wanna pull one out, we just say yes, no on, on a list of items?
Yes, that's up to council. We can talk about that at staff meetings. I, there, there are great advantages to a consent agenda, 'cause it goes by quickly. On the other hand, it's not quite as transparent to the public, which is my one concern about it, but, uh, we can always group things. So let's continue to talk about it. Uh, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to new business, the discussion of a new alcohol policy for 2023 Music in the Parks sponsored events. Let's see, Mr. Browning, are you going to present that? Thank you. Mr. Browning is the Parks and Rec co-chair.
Good evening, council. Thanks for the reappointment, by the way. It's, it's an honor to serve, uh, the town. This has been seven, eight months in, in progress, this, um, alcohol policy for, uh, selected, uh, parts of Music in the Park. I did notice, uh, in fact, at your pleasure, mayor, would you like me to read the document?
No, I, you can, you can give it a quick gloss.
Sure, sure.
And summarize some of the things, if you like.
Our, our thought, we had a subcommittee, but basically, our thought process, we wanted, you know, uh, easy to follow, clear, concise, simple, uh, policy for this first trial year. And we have six Music in the Parks. This, um, alcohol policy will affect four of those sponsored events. So, so we're excited about that. That will let us move from more local, local bands to more regional bands. And, and Ms. Phyllis says we've been in the Music in the Park business for about 10 years, so, so we wanna try to evolve and make it bigger and better, so, uh, hopefully this will do that. This policy basically states, um, any vendor who sells alcohol will have to have, um, North Carolina State Alcohol Sales Permit. Um, the town will hire at least one off-duty sheriff's deputy just to monitor behavior, make sure that beverages stay in our designated place. Attendees who consume alcohol will have to be at least 21 years old, verified by government issued identification. So then, let's see, just going on down, we do have attendees shall be limited to purchase two drinks per visit. We really didn't get into how many times you can go back, and, and our, our hope is that the vendors will recognize if a person's been up there 10 times and has trouble getting to and fro, you know, that, that will take care of itself. So, so two drinks per, um, uh, per person, per visit. We're basically gonna have, uh, uh, an area designated, just an amphitheater area, uh, where you can't take alcohol in any parts of the park, like you can't get a beverage and go fishing. You have to stay within a designated area, uh, within amphitheater. It seems like I'm, I've glossed over, we're gonna use wristbands to identify people that, that are of age and, and, uh, can, uh, purchase alcohol. Let's see, and, and again, as I mentioned, they would just be the sponsored events, the four sponsored events to the Music in the Park. The others will be no alcohol and, and, you know, as far as alcohol in the other part of the park, it's, it's, you know, just, you know, that part hadn't changed, it's still, you know, no alcohol in the other parts of the park. And the dates, our sponsored event's gonna be May 13th, June 10th, August 12th, and October 14th. So, uh, again, we're excited about the change, and, um, hopefully, we'll, we'll have a good positive, uh, uh, trial period for this. So, do y'all have any questions, comments?
Okay, so the, the town's gonna hire the deputy. Will the town be paying for the deputy?
Mr. Bruce, that may be a good question for you.
Um, yes, although we will have, um, uh, I guess fees that the vendors will pay to the town, and when we set those fees, it'll take into account the costs that the town bears for hiring.
You kinda, I'm glad that, that was kind of my next question there on that. Thank you for.
You know, when I heard sponsored, I thought we, you know, just one big sponsor for, we're gonna have different layer, uh, levels of sponsorship. So we may have a large gold sponsor and several sponsors for one event, so, uh, that will hopefully generate a lot of good revenue. And, and basically, you know, the bands now, we, I think we pay $500, and, and we're talking going forward, $2,500 to $3,000, um, for the more regional bands, and so that's where the sponsorship money will come in.
Thank you. Council, um, do you have a question?
Well, should we not make a motion first and then discuss?
We can, we can ask questions before we make a motion.
Well, 'cause I've got some questions relating to how it'll be implemented.
Go ahead.
Or, uh, will the vendors have special cups that will be readily identifiable as holding alcoholic beverages so that the, uh, the deputy can police and enforce keeping the alcohol within the restricted area?
Right. We didn't, um, we mentioned the, the wristbands, but we didn't talk specifically about the cups. You're my fallback two guy there, Mr. Bruce.
I would echo Mr. Browning. Um, I don't believe that that was addressed.
Right.
I thought it was.
Right. Right. And that stands for reason, that, you know, it's advertisement for that specific vendor.
Yeah, okay.
So I, I think we, we couldn't implement that.
Well, and the other, the other issue, of course, there is a no alcohol policy in the park. So I, I would guess at these four special events, you would be monitoring what is being brought into the park?
Right.
So that you don't have any carry-in alcohol? The only alcohol consumed would be purchased?
Correct. So, yeah, that part wouldn't change. You know, it is still, yeah, illegal to bring alcohol in.
Thank you.
I, I have one more question.
Okay.
Uh, where, okay, I know you, you, uh, you said there's gonna be a designated area within, you know, where, where is that?
I think, George, it's.
Are we looking at that half-moon area?
The food trailer, and I'm, I think we're gonna use the, the walkway as, as a perimeter, is my understanding. It'll pretty much lend itself, um, um, to stand out and be able to, to, you know, rope that off or designate that area.
Thank you. Uh, council, are you ready to make a motion on this matter?
I'll make a motion that we approve this with the, with two changes. In the, in the paragraph where it says indicating the ability to purchase an alcoholic beverage, it says, it should, I'd like to change that to indicating the ability to purchase and consume an alcoholic beverage. And then it also, I think it's important that what Mr. Sullivan brought up is that alcoholic beverages will be dispensed in a uniquely identifiable cup. I don't know what the exact wording in there, but basically, I believe that's something we just can't go on the assumption. I think we need to make sure the vendor understands that they need to provide a clearly identifiable cup, so when the sheriff is walking around that. So I don't know what the exact wording is, but I'd like to have wording to that. Do I need that?
You know, I may phone the friend.
You got, you got enough of what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, I understand, I understand your concern.
Phyllis, did y'all mention that? Phyllis is on that subcommittee.
Yeah. I mean, the reason why I definitely want that consumed is because a person's able to buy two drinks and are able to walk away, that, that might encourage them to buy a drink for someone that's not supposed to be drinking, and if the sheriff's not able to quickly, I realize I'm going beyond my motion, so.
Sure, sure.
That's okay, you can be the first to speak on your motion.
I'll second it.
Uh, the motion has been made and seconded. Is there discussion?
Mr. Kennerman, I'm sorry, may I ask, what was the first change you requested?
In the paragraph where it says by vendor indicating the ability to purchase an alcoholic beverage, I'd like to modify that to indicating the ability to purchase and consume an alcoholic beverage.
That's the fourth paragraph. So the motion has been made and seconded. Council, is there discussion? Councilman McClellan.
Not really. I mean, we've, I've asked my questions and.
Thank you, okay. Mayor Protem?
The, the only other question I have is, uh, I had a conversation with Ashley, uh, our deputy clerk, um, Ashley Royal. They said sometimes it's been challenging to get off-duty sheriffs would be able to hire, uh, a non-Gilford County sheriff, like Randolph County or, or Rockingham, or would that be something we'd be allowed to do?
You know, I, Mr. Bruce, I had a conversation with Ashley about this today. I said, aren't there times when we can't find one? She said there never has been, 'cause we've never had to go to the highest level. Through discussions with the captain, she's confident that we can always have one.
Okay.
And I'm sorry, I see a hand raised in the back, but we can't take questions, although you can speak during public comments. Thank you.
So, I think I've rambled on enough.
Councilman Pittman.
I'd, I'd like to thank the subcommittee. I, I think it's a good idea. I appreciate the two additions, uh, that Councilman, uh, Kennerman made. I think the cup is helpful, and although, to me, it was kind of assumed that it was illegal if you're under 21 to drink, I think that, you know, state, clearly states, if you're 21, don't give your 19-year-old buddy a drink. And, uh, but it, I feel like they have, from talking, uh, with members of the subcommittee, I think you really have done a good job researching best practices for this type of event. Um, I've attended many public concerts and other events where alcohol is, is served, and even gray-haired, bearded people get, have to show, flash that ID, uh, to get their wristband. And, um, and I think with these guidelines in place, is we can continue to have our family-oriented Music in the Parks, um, in a safe way that, um, maybe expands the appeal and, um, gets us a bigger audience. So, thank you.
Councilman Sullivan, sorry.
I, I appreciate the, uh, the limited approach to this. It gives us the opportunity to tweak it, if you will, come back, revisit, if, and, and see what works well and see what doesn't. Uh, this is, this has, uh, been done in a lot of different venues now for, for a number of years, and so it, it would appear it would work here well also. But I appreciate the careful approach that, uh, that the subcommittee and the committee is taking on this. Thank you.
Yes, and I, I as well. And I, I guess my only concern going forward is to see how it goes, how the implementation goes. And I do wel, we do all welcome questions and comments on this during public comments. Thank you. Uh, so the motion has been made and seconded. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed? The motion carries and the policy is approved. Thank you, council. With the amendments. Let's see, we will now move to, we'll now go to, uh, Planning Director Sean Taylor for the next item, which is consideration of a contract for a new audiovisual system.
Mayor and council members, as you can see from the town manager's report, uh, we have now received a quote for implementing enhancements to our current sound system that we've had, as many of you all know, we've had many difficulties with over the past couple of years. And so now we've received a quote, um, with the tax in the amount of $17,943.83. Now, the tax amount, we will get back, uh, from the state on that. So the actual cost for us would be 16, 809. One of the amenities we'll be adding to our system would be a, a, additional assistive div, assisted listening systems for the hearing impaired that we currently do not have, so it'll, um, make us a more ADA compliant town hall. And then overall, just better enhancing our overall system. I mean, right now, we're at, uh, Michael could tell you that our current system is about maxed out on what we can do for our adjustability. And people would hear, can you already hear a lot of the feedback that comes through our system right now?
Thank you. Uh, council, you've had the chance to review the contract. Is there a motion?
Yep. Uh, make the motion that we approve the contract with audio, well, hold on, so you can hear me. Uh, make a motion to approve, uh, approval of the contract with audio and light for the new audiovisual system.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Okay, I'm sorry. No, no, you have something? No. Just a little attempt to lose. Where's the council chompers room?
I see that.
Next town over?
The council chompers equipment room. Typos are fun. Thank you. Anything else?
Uh, yeah. This, this includes, I guess, replacing the main unit in the, in the room back there? Okay. I'm just curious.
Yeah, they're gonna replace the, the amp and the overall system.
Okay.
Will be replaced. And the new system will be also be, uh, we're currently maxed out on the number of mics that we can add to that.
Understand.
So this new system will be ex, more expandable than what we currently have to.
And I'm very appreciative that we fi, we're looking at the Wi-Fi, Wi-Fi based assistive listening system, 'cause maybe we can get your mother to come back to meetings. 'Cause she's been asking for this for a long time. So I'm glad you, uh, were, were able to do that.
So, I do have, so we're gonna have, we're gonna, like, if I'm speaking into this microphone here, uh, Andy's gonna be able to hear me?
Hopefully. Yes. One of the, one of the parts of the, parts of this is that, um, I know that council members have difficulty hearing the public on there because the, the speakers that face to you all aren't positioned well enough for you all to hear, um, One of the parts of this is that I know that councilmembers have difficulty hearing the public on there because the speakers that face you, you all aren't positioned well enough for you all to hear. And those speakers will be moved further back, so additional speakers will be in the audience to better enhance people to hear and to further back and hear.
So, now, well, this system, though, is not going to actually replace this.
Exactly. We are going to keep our existing mics, because those are actually still being manufactured and still able to get parts for and everything else. So they're still very modern.
Now, am I going to still have to basically get up this close to this mic in order for it to go out?
That's one of the things with our, problems with the adjustability within our current system, where we'll be able to enhance, where you won't have to do that.
So in other words, I could step over here and this thing's going to still read my voice?
To a limit, yes.
Yes, let's.
Okay, because I mean, I know.
I don't think we can get into the granular detail on this. Let's move on.
Yeah, let me better answer it this way.
Okay. Well, it seems like I always get complaints that, you know, if I step over, if I'm over on this side leaning.
That's right.
Well, you always need to talk, no matter what, you always need to talk into the mic. It's a good center to go by.
Okay, let's move on. Councilwoman Pittman, any comments?
I'm just going to repeat what Councilman Kinnaman said. I'm especially pleased that we're adding the Wi-Fi based assistive listening system, not only just because we want to check the box, now we have an ADA compliant room, but because it really is important to those who rely on hearing aids, particularly in large public spaces where the sound is not very good. So thank you for including that. That's good investment.
Councilman Sullivan?
And since I'm one of those hearing aid wearing folks, I'm looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries and the contract for the new AV system is approved. We'll now open the first of two periods for public comments. Speakers must provide their name and address and are asked to keep their comments brief, under three minutes in length. Is there anyone who wishes to speak tonight? As your chance, seeing no one?
Oh, I got one.
He's coming. Thanks for being here tonight.
Andy Michaels, 8216 Hunting Cog Road. Question maybe for you guys that maybe can go to the attorney. When we already have this alcohol policy in place and somebody gets in an accident right after this event, how liable is the town for something like that? And how much money is out there that somebody's going to go after? I mean, it just kind of sounds odd that we're making such a specific change to no alcohol within the park, so.
Thank you.
So, and then, the other thing is, I would just say, I'm not in favor of spending any more than like $200,000 on the Redmond house. And I think it's not reasonable, in my opinion, to spend $450,000 or even budget $450,000 to renovate a house like that. So that's my due opinion.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? If there's no one, we'll move on to our monthly financial update, and I'll invite our finance officer, Sam Anders, to present it.
Yeah, they're all my stuff here in the right order. Everyone should have received financials by email yesterday. And overall, we had a rather busy end of the year. Everyone's got the financials, normal financial status for us, holding strong reserves, $4,550,000 in total assets, liabilities of $63,000, fund balance of 4.486, with a million, a little under a million seven committed to capital projects, and then the stabilizations, and then unassigned fund balance of 2.4 million. For the month, we had $135,000 in revenues, and we had expenditures of $153,000, so we reduced our fund balance by a hair under $18,000. For this time of year, a normal occurrence with us. Our financials have supplementary Schedule I, which is the balances in both the banks. At Truist, we have $322,000 rounded, and 4.205 million at Bank of Oak Ridge, most of which is in the ICS money market, and the ARP money is segregated, as you can see. Behind that is Schedule II, which has all the detail of all the expenses, all of the revenues, and then is followed by the asset schedule of III, and the supplementary Schedule IV is the debt service, which we do have the payment coming up the 16th of this month for the next installment on the loan on the Whittaker land. So overall, a fairly standard June. We've had a lot of things going on. We received a wire transfer remitting property taxes of $2,001.63 and motor vehicle taxes of $8,777.97 from Guilford County. Total received is $10,779.60, and that represents all collections in our account as of June 30th, '22. We've received our monthly sales tax and property tax disbursement, which are normal, interest, Veterans Honor Green donations, Dog Park donations, which, there's a negative there, which reflects the donations that y'all gave at the beginning of the meeting coming out against the net revenue, or the gross revenues. Other park revenues, we had some miscellaneous revenues from the sale of surplus property, which was the golf cart that was scrapped out for parts. That's been taken care of. And then we had our franchise tax receipts. This is telecommunications, video programming, electric power, and pipe natural gas that are all collected at the state level and remitted out to us. We're still monitoring our investments. The interest rate on the yields are not changing very much, while the interest rates on loans and other things are going up. During the month, we've supported staff with grant compliance. We're monitoring the bid process, which has kind of been stagnated. We're keeping in communication with Truist in anticipation of the rates. I have had some contact with both Truist and Piedmont Federal, which were our two qualified bids last time, gearing up for the potential of a rebid, depending on what the rate structure should entail and what council's desires are. The ARPA and SCIF grants, we're still got research on those. We've reached out to the auditors. You received a preliminary draft of the engagement letter and the contract earlier, well, yesterday. We have been back and forth, myself, Bill, and Michael Thomas. Michael got a response back from the legal department trying to resolve those things, and it looks like, Michael, you betted $1,000 every item that he picked up on.
Saved a little money.
Yes. They included a yellow book audit in anticipation because of the grant, so we ended up with a 5% reduction in the fee, which lowers the net fees down to $26,400 for all the services this year. That's about, I think, $1,800 difference from last year. So overall, a reasonable fee, given the extra work we've got, because even though we've not expended anything, which, under the ARPA monies and the SCIF grants and all, which would trigger additional audit work, that'll come in this next year. We still have, you know, more compliance stuff and more documents to go through for the receipt of the ARPA funds, for the receipt of the capital funds, and all the other projects we've got going. So fee seems very reasonable. The terms have been resolved by email communication back and forth, and I have requested a final clean draft of the engagement letter and the contract to audit the accounts once their legal has finished drafting all of Michael's changes. So I'm expecting that probably tomorrow, no later than first of next week. And if you so choose to go ahead and vote tonight in the affirmative, I will arrange for myself and the mayor to electronically sign the document, and then, of course, we'll get copies. As is always, the audit contracts are monitored by the local government commission. They have to be filed down there. We cannot disperse any money to the auditors until they have billed the LGC. The LGC's reviewed the bills, then we get an authorization to release. So all of that process is still in there. From the Treasurers Conference I attended three weeks ago and two weeks ago, it was done remotely over the course of three mornings. We have found out the Treasurers office is going to be monitoring the audits a little differently now. They're going to be doing more data analytics work and less old-school, read the financials, review the financials, and there's less opinion, it's going to be more data-driven, and it should also speed the process up, which, it's already a fairly quick process for them to look at our audits after October 25, and to get that information back out if they've got a concern. And usually, we've not had any concerns. We have had a few minor things over the years, including the differential on where to put a comma in the wording. One time was a item. So as Martha's smiling, you know that that was somebody that had a grammar cop or whatever that was their teacher. But all in all, the process should be much more clean and lean as far as getting the documents from the auditors in, getting the approvals and everything for us. I am glad that we are, do actually have auditors. This is going to be a little shocking probably to Martha. 10% of the counties and roughly 10% of the municipalities in the state still have not complied with the audit requirements as of October 25 of last year. And it's due to a couple of things. Due to the economy, there's been a lot of turnover in certain governmental units, and there's been a lot of turnover in CPA firms, and due to liability concerns and other issues arising because of all these grant programs and all. They're counseling that if you have an auditor and you have at least one contract to look at, you're lucky. A lot of the larger counties cannot even get two firms to even bid. They can't even get a competitive price. It's because the supply is greatly less than the demand. So the whole contract process and all is very good in our state with the LGC monitoring it. And, you know, it was very nice, in the Treasurers Conference, they gave us all of this information. So I'm glad to report we're in full compliance on everything. But we're getting ready for the start of the fiscal year. The Water Enterprise Fund is underway, we're working with the bank on that. And last month, I requested my normal motion. You should have received a copy of the budget amendment, the final one, to bring our budget into balance for the end of year, is a total of $1,0948 out of fund balance, and $1,948 in various small increases scattered out among our park and our administrative. So overall, we ended with a very good year. I would ask for, you gave me the approval last time to do this, I would ask for a formal vote on this budget amendment so that I can log it for the audit records as being approved and sign off on it. And I would ask for approval of the engagement letter and the audit contracts pending confirmation by Michael of all the legal changes being made into his satisfaction, and at that time, the mayor and I would bind the contract.
Okay, so counsel, we first need a motion on the budget amendment.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the budget amendment in the amount of $1,948 to finish out fiscal year 6/30/2022.
The motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries and the amendment is approved, and thank you for getting us through all of this.
I'm impressed that you get to the end of the year and you have less than $2,000 that you have to.
Yeah, that's pretty. That's pretty close.
This is when I would pat myself on the back, but Brianna in my office was lead on monitoring that over the last quarter and did a phenomenal job. She's doing really well, all my folks are doing really well.
Your staff is terrific. We'll now invite a motion regarding the proposed audit contract pending confirmation of the details by our attorney.
Sounds like a motion to me. I'll second it.
Okay, I'll move that then. Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, any opposed? The motion carries, and thank you.
I'm sorry, may I ask who made the second?
I did. I did.
And the proposed audit contract is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then finally, counsel, we need a motion to accept the financial report as presented.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the financial report as presented by our chief financial officer.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries, and thank you for the report. It is approved.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. We'll now move to item 11 for committee reports, and I'll invite brief reports of up to three minutes from our boards and committees and community organizations. Finance, they haven't met, so no report from them. Water Advisory Board, we've heard from.
Right.
Historic Preservation Commission, oh, they didn't meet either, did they? Okay, this is getting shorter, that's good. Planning and zoning, did not meet either. This is what we call summer in Oak Ridge. Mountains to Sea Trail, do we have a report?
No.
Would you like to report on that?
Yes, they did meet, and we have a work day scheduled for July the 16th, from 9:00 to 12:00. We'll be meeting at the new parking lot on Limble Road. If you, if you're on social media, you can check out the Facebook event if you, and I can't remember Bill's email right now, because, you know, we just like to know you're coming. We're going to be doing some maintenance work on both the Headwaters Trail and in the Cascades. We planned a trip and took it yesterday to see the trail easements that would have been acquired in the last couple of years at the Carriage Cove and at Pemberley Estate, which was Spencer's property, and that was challenging. But it's beautiful, beautiful property, and it's going to make a wonderful addition to the Oak Ridge Trails when we can get those open, so we're getting excited about that. We did talk a little bit about Heritage Day, and I do believe that we're going to have a booth at that as well. That's primarily, we did receive some funding that paid for all of our new signage at the parking lot on Limble Road and also at the parking lot on Goodwill Church Road, as well as directional signage on the trails on those two. And that was from Bill and Pam Lemons, and so we're very thankful for that. And our kiosk is up, content to be determined, we're still working on that.
Thank you. We'll move then on to Conservation Easement Committee, Ms. Farrell.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Farrell, my address is 5839 Billet Road in Oak Ridge, and I'm the chair of the Conservation Easement Committee. The committee met on June 15th here at Town Hall. As I mentioned in our May update, the committee has planned a mailing to outreach out to prospective property owners in Oak Ridge to give them an introduction to the core grant initiative and provide them with a point of contact. And in our June meeting, we continued to work on that outreach by reviewing the inventories of historic properties that we wanted to add to the mailing list, as well as finalizing the list of properties that would be a good fit from the open space perspective. The letter was finalized and we all signed off on it. It has been forwarded to Sandra to complete the mailing. We also discussed outreach for a potential easement candidate, and more details are to follow on that conversation. Many thanks to Councilwoman Pittman for going above and beyond to update the list of open space properties, and also thanks to Alexandra Gill for crafting the letter for the mailing. And finally, thanks to Sandra and to Ashley Royal for their assistance with our efforts. Any questions or feedback?
Oh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Special Events Committee, Ms. Dumchowski.
Patty Dumchowski, 7320 Indianview Drive. What a great night tonight is for our Veterans Honor Green, to start off our new fiscal year with grand total of almost $124,000 towards our goal of $200,000. Just amazing. Thanks to Sandra for always working with me on our spreadsheets to make sure that we always agree with what's coming in. Our engraved pavers have been selling very well, and we will continue to spread the word of their availability. of their availability. A big thank you to Tom Collins and the Oak Ridge Youth Association for including our fundraiser flyer on their email distribution. We welcome any more businesses within the community to support our efforts, and we continue to send out requests to our local businesses. Light of the night. This is Saturday, December 3rd from 1:00 to 7:00. Ben Mulraven and his subcommittee are working hard to secure the craft vendors, food trucks, and entertainment for the event. We've purchased our additional luminaries and associated supplies, and that will be assembled at a later date. Special events will again be participating with a booth at Heritage Day. This will be September 24th. We're working with the planning committee to have something a little bit different this year rather than just a simple baking contest. Details to be shared when available. Veterans Day Ceremony, everything is in place, speakers, and we hope to have some additional activities at that time. We've also started, are going to start planning for our 25th town anniversary, which will be coming up next year. So that's in the works. Any questions?
Thank you for what you're doing. And last but not least, Parks and Rec, Mr. Browning.
Hello, good counsel. I'm John Browning, 8024 Linville Road. Just wanted to highlight some of our items that we did at our June 16th Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting in addition to approving the alcohol policy. Pickleball seems to be still a good fit at the park. We did have a request from the core group of players for more time and for another court. And since the youth association, their spring/summer sports are kind of winding down, we basically, the pickleball court, you know, occupies some of the parking lots, so sometimes we just can't sacrifice the parking for pickleball. So we think up until mid-August, when the ORYA gets started again with our fall stuff, we can let these folks play Monday through Friday, dawn to dusk, so pretty much any time. And there may be an occasional weekend when there's nothing going on, but basically Monday through Friday, sunup to sundown. And Terry agreed for the town to provide the second net and a backstop. I think they're $300 or $400 for both of those, just temporary. Laura Peoples provided the first, and so Terry thought we could go ahead and the town provide the stuff for the second. So anyway, still waiting to get that court marked off, but again, seems to be a good fit, and those folks enjoy playing, it seems like. They're waiting for George to get out there and play with them, apparently. Music in the Park, again, if anybody's never been to Music in the Park or can just go to one per year, this coming Saturday is the one to go to. We have two bands, Ghost of Liberty, that's going to play 6:00 to 7:30, and then Barefoot Modern. Barefoot Modern has been around, one of the more popular bands, 8:00 to 9:30. So again, it promises to be a fun night.
I'll pay for video of George playing pickleball.
I'll challenge George to a game of pickleball.
I was kind of waiting for, when maybe the temperature kind of cools down a little bit more. But I got to tell you, the folks out there are having a ball. They are. They are having.
And this is just in the parking lot?
Yeah, this is in the parking lot. I mean, this is amazing.
These are makeshift courts.
I mean, I can hardly wait till we get some permanent pickleball courts.
They were playing yesterday about 2:00 o'clock in the afternoon at that eat, and I'm like, that is dedication.
And there is a place, speaking of pickleball, on the website. It's going to be bigger and better Monday afternoon, but if folks are interested in it, they can sign up to play and know where the equipment is, and Laura Peoples will get them all squared away. So when you're ready, George.
Laura's, she's doing a great job.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
We'll now move on to reports from our community organizations, starting with ORYA, Mr. Collins. Thanks for being here. I know you've been somewhere more fun this week, like the beach.
We were at the Outer Banks and pickleball, probably 50 playing at the courts, and it was two tennis players.
Yeah. That's amazing.
Randy Collins, 45, 14 Peoples Road. Can't believe half the year has gone by, but we, the ORYA, would love to thank the town for supporting us through the first half of the year and looking forward to the second half of the support as well. Three things, it is very slow, as someone mentioned earlier, but we do have three things. We have a youth running camp, which is started on the 5th. It's going through July the 15th. And the running camp is for the 5K that's coming up on July the 16th at 8:30, and I would like to see counsel's hands, you know, going to be there. There's some George.
I'll just thumbs upping it.
Anyway, that supports the Harvest Food Bank. That supports the Harvest Food Bank. So all the donations and stuff is a great opportunity for us to help.
What's the date on that again?
That is July the 16th at 8:30.
July's 16th?
And you can go to ORYA website at any time. Our website as well has been developed, so a new one will be coming out very soon there as well. And the other thing we have is self-defense class for our high school girls. That's on Sundays this whole of July from 4:00 to 5:30. It's the must-ain fitness. I think that's a good opportunity for our young ladies in Oak Ridge. And I talked about the website, and again, just like, thank you for the support that you're giving to ORYA.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Randy, you're doing a great job.
And the military academy, do we have a report tonight? And what about the elementary school?
Do not. They are on vacation.
Oh, that's right. Good for them. Okay, we will now open a second period for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Mr. Collins?
Randy Collins, 45, 14 Peoples Road. I'm trying to stick to the regulations here, but I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about that website. Sitting back there, just seeing the pictures and how it flows, it made me proud, man. Honestly, to be a citizen of Oak Ridge here, I mean, I can't imagine people looking at that and can't feel the home. And y'all guys just did such a great job there, man. It was sweet. That was it.
Thank you. I hope you still feel that way when you try to find something. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Mr. Andrews?
Okay. My name is Sam Andrews, 1829 Oak Ridge Road, Oak Ridge, North Carolina, to parrot my good friend George McLavon. Wanted to make a public announcement. I am the managing member of SKA Properties LLC. It's an entity I formed last year to hold my interest in commercial real estate here in the community. SKA Properties LLC closed on three tracts of land located at 2101 to 2105 Oak Ridge Road and 8100 to 8298 Linville Road on June the 24th. Be two weeks tomorrow. Current plans are to perform deferred maintenance and cleanup of the properties to allow engineering evaluations of the land and buildings. Once these evaluations are performed, decisions will then be made on the redevelopment and reuse of the properties. A location for the construction of a new office building on the land will be one of the goals of these evaluations. And to make it a little more understandable, 2101 is the Moore House on the corner of Linville and Oak Ridge Road. 2103 is the former gas station that houses LMT small engine maintenance. 2105 is the former grocery building, two-story red brick building. And the Linville Road address is all of the open land, which I affectionately am calling the Bamboo Grove.
Bamboo Farm.
Yes. But I wanted to make a public announcement here. This is a major move for me. This is a major project that I'm undertaking myself, my employees, my family. It's a good location. It has a long, very storied career in commerce, business, however you want to phrase it. And I'm hoping that this will be the next new and better chapter. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mr. Browning, come on down.
Definitely get my 15 minutes of fame, sorry. John Browning, 8024 Linville Road. I was so excited about pickleball, I failed to mention for our Parks and Rec Board, we do have a vacancy for a teen advisor, taking applications through July 13th. So it's a real good position in the town. If anybody knows a teenager, she brings the average age down just like 30, 30 points just being a teenager to our group. So anyway, that teen advisor role, Selby Chipman is moving on, graduating, so again, we will look forward, if y'all know of anybody, again, make that application before July 13th. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll now move to a brief period of counsel comments, and I would like to keep them brief so that we have time for our closed session. I'll start with Councilman Sullivan.
Okay. I will try to be brief. I'm amazed at the generosity of our citizens. We all talk every week, every month, every meeting about the time that our volunteers all give, but tonight, we've seen illustrations of the financial generosity as well. I look at what Canine Capers generated in gifts to those nonprofits. I look at the incredible success of the Honor Green and how quickly that fund is being The trailer rebuilds at Northwest High School is just yet another example. Our support of the food pantries and the food ministries in this area. This is a great place to live, and I just want to thank everybody for having the civic spirit that they've got. I'm excited about that new well and Heritage Farm Park, but I temper that excitement with the fact we've got to survive a 24-hour drawdown test. So it may not have quite the flow that it appears, but it certainly appears that we'll have more than an adequate supply to proceed with all those projects over there. So it's an exciting time for us. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pittman?
I had a little bit to what Councilman Sullivan just said. Every month, we talk about our volunteers, and he just brought out everything about how generous our area residents are. But what I was thinking about today is I want to thank you all for coming tonight and participating in your local government. The same thanks go out to residents who reach out to us in between meetings. Whether you agree with us or not, we really want to hear from you, because I have so much respect for people who are willing to come to us and listen to us and talk with us and keep those lines of communications open so that we can accomplish the task. And we could not do it, and we couldn't make informed decisions if we didn't have that type of interaction with the residents of Oak Ridge. So thank you for volunteering. Thank you for being generous, and thank you for talking to us even when we're tired.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Kineman?
I apologize for not being at the last two meetings. A combination of events aligned, and I wasn't paying close attention, and I'll make sure that doesn't happen again. As always, please, if you can donate, do. I did want to just talk a little bit about the budget last month. I support the budget. I understand we raised your taxes regardless of what, you know, with the rate staying the same, we chose not to have a revenue-neutral rate, so the end effect was we raised your taxes. I understand that. And unfortunately, the other two taxing authorities in the county chose not to do revenue-neutralies either, so, you know, we're getting, there is a significant change in our taxes. I think we're doing well in Oak Ridge with those taxes. We're opening a new park. We are being careful with your money. Like you said, it doesn't change the fact of the change in taxes, so. I do have my continuing concerns about the Redmond Community Center. I support renovating the exterior of it, which adheres to our public, to our historic district. My main concern is the cost versus the benefit, and I also have concerns about whether or not it's really going to get used that much, and also the safety of the facility. If someone's having a birthday party there and children are running around, even with the most diligent parent, a few seconds and a kid's running out in the street chasing a ball and, you know, the danger of that. Like I said, even the most diligent parent that I've talked to will say at some point in the child's life, they've lost track of their child. It may have been for 10 seconds, it may have been for a minute, but they've lost track of their child for a few seconds. And that's, like I said, we shouldn't create a situation where it's easy for a child to do something that a child would do. So I have a concern there. I also question whether or not there really is demand for this space. If you're a nonprofit, nonreligious organization, you can use Town Hall for meetings. All the churches, from what I understand, all the local churches will rent you out facilities, and several of them have kitchens, so you have those facilities. There's also local restaurants that will have party rooms, and there's also the AI church. So there's a range of options for meeting space, party space, and I'm not sure as town we should really be competing with that, using taxpayer dollars to create a facility that competes with people that are already providing the exact spaces that we're claiming that this building's going to do. And when it's small size, I don't think it's really going to be that beneficial. So I mean, the main concern I have is like cost. It's very expensive for the, you know, it's not, and I don't believe it's going to get used at the level that we're talking about. So those are my concerns there. And if those risks can be addressed, I'm open to them. But like I said, I have serious concerns about the practicality, whether it's prudent to spend that kind of money for a facility that I don't know that the demand is really there. If those risks can be addressed, I would be in favor of using a model we use with the Veterans Green where private money is used to make up the difference. But at a half a million dollars, and we don't know what it's really going to cost until we bid it out, I, like I said, I don't think it's prudent use of taxpayer money. So that's where I am on that. Thanks. And again, thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Councilman McLowan?
Thank you, Dr. Fear. Anyway, want to thank everybody for coming out tonight, but I also want to introduce a good friend of mine who's here, Janelle Robinson. She's on Summerfield Town Council. She and I serve together on the PTRC, and so, welcome. And always glad to see you. And I want to thank everybody. I want to thank our, you know, the finance committee, ORYA. I want to especially thank the water folks. I mean, we are moving forward, and it's, you know, going to be tough, it's going to be challenging, but you know something? We're up to the challenge, aren't we? I think we are. And, you know, I'm looking forward to hear what their recommendations ultimately going to be. I think we, as far as taxes go, we did not increase the tax rate. We have amongst the lowest tax rate in North Carolina. So let's kind of put this in perspective. You know, this misrepresentation or somewhat disingenuous attacks that have been made on this score, I think are, you know, frankly, out of line. We have a, you know, nothing, we have nothing to fear but fear itself. I've often said this. I know that there's a certain member of a certain party that's noted for having said that, but it's the truth. We are a free society, land of the free, but you got to also be brave. Anyway, thank you all for coming out, and I look forward to seeing you at Music at the Park.
Thank you. I want to say how proud I am to be a part of this body and to have colleagues who, just like residents, we have to share our opinions and work with each other, but it's a joy and it's an honor, and also to work with our excellent staff. I'm grateful to each of you for the talents that you bring. I do want to say about the tax issue just briefly, we didn't raise the tax rate, that's true. George makes a good point. Jim makes a good point that most people's tax bills go up, have gone up, but the percentage of your tax bill that is attributable to the town of Oak Ridge is very small. I think it's about 9%. So most people's taxes didn't go up more than, tax bill didn't go up more than $40. And it's in recognition, to be fair, of the increased value of our homes in this inflationary period. And I would also just point to the fact that there isn't a lot of fat in our budget. We can quibble about which projects we like better than other projects. There are projects that I'm not as enthusiastic about, but when there's a majority of counsel and a majority of residents, we move forward carefully, conservatively, but also ambitiously. In the county budget, I would just say what I've said before, there's a lot of fat in that budget. And I would just say again, we are a very low-tax town. Anyway, at this point... point, I'd like to close this period for comments, and council, we have a personnel item to consider in closed session. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion to go on closed session to consider personnel matter.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. We are going to go into closed session outside these chambers, and we'll return shortly. You're welcome to stay.
Unless we return to open session?
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries and we're back in open session. And we have been discussing a matter regarding the town manager's salary and I'd like to invite a motion on that.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we raise our town manager, Mr. Bruce's salary to a figure of $98,000 in recognition of a job well done.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion, council?
Good job. Well deserved.
Outstanding.
Excellence. Thank you for everything you're doing. We're very fortunate to have you as our town manager and your performance has been nothing short of superb over the last year and you're incredibly valuable to what we're doing here in Oak Ridge. Thank you. So if there are no further comments, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries and the salary increase is approved. We'll now move to our final item. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned.